...to the United States of America. And to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, and who has all the liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
We are pleased to welcome today, after caucus last night, Jeff Cather. He's replacing Bob Tan as the spot. And we're just happy to have Jeff. Do you need to say anything?
Just very humbled to honor me here. Thank you.
That's good. Thank you. Okay. We did have a special meeting during the month on March 6th, and then our regular meeting on the 14th, so we have two minutes and minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the March 6th minutes?
So, move. Second.
Motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And the March 14th minutes?
Move. Second.
Motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone object? Motion carries. Mark Holcher has information about the 2025 budget process.
I want to take a little time to go over some things that my office has been doing to prepare for the 25 budgets. First thing we did, we implemented that each office could have access to Lao, which was important so we could proceed with the budget process. Second thing we did, we came up with a method to pay claims that I was finally satisfied with. It seems to be okay. The office holders haven't complained to me about it. So what we did, I think, was appropriate and the way to go with the claims. Debbie attended a seminar a couple of weeks ago, in which we brought a lot of information back to me concerning my role in budgets, council's role in budgets, and a lot of different changes than what I perceived to be. We handed out to you a budget plan for '25. We've started the budgets and developing what we think are timelines that I need. Council sets their own timelines for meetings and workshops. I set the timelines with office holders on when I need information and the forms that come back to me. One of them that is important to me are the forms 144, which are salary ordinances, not salary ordinances, salary requests by office holders. That information will come from HR, not the individual salaries from the offices because of the way, manner in which we do the budgets, the manner in which I think you want the budgets done. So that information concerning salaries and what is requested has to be given to me by June 28th. So that would go to, we're going to talk to HR, and that request would be made to HR for all the offices. Since you use ERWEN as the basis and the method of notifying each office is not necessary. I would appreciate if you would look at this schedule so that we have an understanding of where I'm going with the budgets. We're going to have Lao come in and give a presentation on budgets that we're putting together for next year. And hopefully, in a couple of weeks, we will be able to do the budgets online with office holders, no paper. So it's going to be important, I think, that you attend this seminar to see how to operate your computers, to get access that you're going to need at budget time. Those dates will come back from Lao and we'll give them to you as to when they are, as well as all the office holders. This process that we're going to be going through is different. It's new. I think it's, I promised back with, some time ago with you that I was going to do this. This is the third step of what I wanted to get done, and we're moving on with it. And Lao says that they will come in themselves and give instructions on how to do this so that it's more of a hands-on thing with Lao that will help. I think everybody understands. On your paper, I've listed several items that both council and auditor have timelines to meet. One of them is that council sets the public hearing dates and the workshop dates. So that when you do that, we will be able to move on with the budgets. So if, when you read this, if you have any questions about what I've done or where the informations come from, if you'll look at the last two pages, you'll see that this, a lot of this information didn't come from me. It came from the State Board of Accounts. It came from the Indiana Association of yours and my offices. So that we think we've given you a pretty good analysis of what the budget process will be in my office and the reasons. So this, like I said, this is going to be a new process, and it's going to be something that is just as new to me as it is to you, but I think it's an improvement, and I like the way it works. If you have any questions, I'll try to answer them, but do read through this and see what questions you might come up with so that we can proceed with the budgets in '25. These are budgets for '25, not '24. So if anybody has any questions about it, I'll try to answer them now, or you can contact me later, however you want to do it.
I just have a quick question, Mark. It says DLGF funds are the funds that need to be included in the budget. What are you calling it? DLGF funds?
Well, last year, as you know, we missed some funds at budget time that we had to go back and pick up later. We are trying to make sure this year that we get all of the funds that you need to pass some kind of a budget on, whether it's just an appropriation or an acknowledgement. And the DLGF is going to work with us and try to pick out those, make sure we get them all, because last year we didn't.
You're calling them DLGF funds, though, not technically. It's just, that's just the way you worded it for this.
Well, Debbie, the-
There are, like, we have our fund numbers. DLGF has fund numbers. Just DOA has fund numbers.
They don't match.
And they're all different, and there's a list of DLGF funds, and those need to be included. And I'm getting ready now to go and compare what is their list versus what we did last year in order to try to figure out, are there some that were missed? Because in the very beginning, I asked somebody, I said, "What ones are we supposed to do?" And they did. So we went with what we thought, and now we can understand a little better if there might be a few more that need to be included. Well, one thing around that, too, that we found out is this next legislative session, there's going to be huge, major changes to the whole tax billing and everything. So I think the Charter of Accounts and all of that is going to change, which is going to be horrible, but, so, hold on to your hat, because it's going to get, it's going to change hugely.
Well, last year was our, my first time going through a budget with county council. Obviously, from what you see here, mistakes were made on my part, and I think that this year I've learned how to do this. It's a little bit different than what I assumed it to be. So that's why we're giving you the, my budget plan. The things that are mine, that are required by law, that are listed in here, so yours are different than mine, but I still have deadlines I have to meet, the forms, information and so on. And I wanted to point out the salary requests by office holders, which would be HR, so that we can make sure that we don't, at the end of the year, trying to rush and get things done.
What holes are left? I think we left over exactly how much money we get, so-
That's, right. That's a problem. And I don't understand how you, well, these are requests that the office holders make. Then you go through the budgets and decide, do you have enough money to meet these or Everything up until you pass the budget are requests, as you know, and they, anything can be changed at that point. So it's not written in stone until you, until you people pass it. But it is written in stone that I have to know what it is so that if I want to make a recommendation to council about something, I can do that.
But to be clear, we'll just leave all salaries the same until we make a decision on what the race is going to be.
Okay.
Because it got confusing last year when people requested amounts, and that wasn't there, but we just need to know to keep the 2024 amounts for salaries.
I'll see what kind of impact that has on what I have to put together. From what I can figure out, the increase for next year is about 4% of what, the additional what you can spend is going to be about 4%. So knowing that, you know what's going to be expected of different line items that you're going to have. I will say to you that one thing about this, in the system we're putting together to do budgets, as you make changes in the budgets, the office holder doesn't have to wait till the whole budget's passed to get that information. They can go into their budget on Lao and see the changes right after you make them, which is an asset, I think, that's better than what it was.
So, Mark, to clarify, a housekeeping piece, if you will, even though we may all have our own kind of computer to work through budgets, Debbie will be here, and hers is the official one, where we make changes.
She will make the changes.
On the computer, like before.
Just like we did before, and you cannot make a change in your budget. I can't have office holders and council going into their budgets and making changes. As you make changes, we'll make them in our system.
That's why, that's why I wanted to clarify. Debbie is the official one, and we want to make sure-
Right.
I will make the changes, but you will instantly be able to go into Lao and your computer and see them.
Right. And so will the office holders.
Yeah. That's the part I know why, is that they will be able to see as you make changes in Lao. That's making sure that things that they're working on.
Just to kind of summarize, I mean, for us, nothing really changes. I mean, this is more your guidelines.
These are things that I need.
Right. But for us and the, and the public, there's really not any change.
Not much. The only thing that they recommended at the seminar that she was in was that once you set your date of meetings to proceed with the budget, then we go with that. And hopefully, when you set an advertised date, for example, then you don't have meetings after the meeting that you had for that budget. Your workshops should be before any discussion of the budget and not after. I don't know how else to-
I don't understand the use of dates.
Well, you're going to pass, you're going to start work on a budget, and you're going to advertise different dates as you go along for that budget. Workshops concerning those budgets should be held before the budget is passed and not drug out after that.
The big thing that I heard, we did have, now we did have, there were decisions like this, but it was about a year. The big thing that I heard was, do things sooner rather than later? And the takeaway I came from was, like, you publish in September, and there's really not meetings after the publish, and then you adopt in October? But the main thing I heard was, don't let things-
Don't let them drag out.
Yeah. Things should be done sooner rather than later. And the other big thing that I heard was the form 144, which, if you look at Page 2, this isn't, I questioned State Board of Accounts when I got back. And Page 2 is an email response I got from State Board of Accounts regarding Form 144 and 33. When you read through that, you will see what our responsibility is regarding those two forms, but because we use ERWEN, that's why we are altering it to not make a department, and he is going to go to HR.
Because of the way you do budgets, we'll adapt to that, rather than notifying each office, which creates confusion, and then go to HR to get that information that I need on, before, what's the date on that? June 28th.
So because Form 144 goes to commissioners as executives-
Correct.
Will commissioners just notify departments that their salary request on Form 144 remains in 2024 Lao with no increase?
That's, that's your call.
I'm asking Jim.
Oh, I, I thought you were going to make-
That's possible, but apparently it should also include any requests for new positions that they want to have.
But not those actual ways.
Any major change in the position.
Yeah. Yeah, what we're talking about is budgets or salaries you've already established. If the office holder on notification has additional staff they want to make, they'll have to include that, which you wouldn't be aware of until they included it.
I mean, Debbie, having not been trained in Lao, do you still provide the council with actual expenditures for one inquiry, which department like we have?
We have already started that.
When you go into Lao, you will have three previous years, and showing the expenses as of that week. And then we will add the columns of the requested, the published, and the adopted. And after, the department has a half, like, two weeks to put their request in. Once they do that, I will automatically put that over into the published, because that's what we did last year, the published, the requested. And then I will automatically put the published over into the adopted. The adopted will be what we will be working on and changing as time goes on.
Lao is going to come in here and train everybody on this system. I would suggest to you that each council member attend that training session so that you'll be up to date on what we're doing. All of the information that I think you've requested in the past will be on your computer. It's just a matter of trying to find it. And Lao is going to come in and show us how to do it.
And do we know when those dates?
We're hoping, like, the last couple of weeks of April or the first couple of weeks.
Yeah, he was supposed to call us back today before the meeting. We hadn't heard from him.
Yes, today they came here, and hopefully, today in Lao, we'll know when those dates are. All right. Thank you.
Okay.
We'll take a look at this and let you know if there's anything that we can address.
Good enough.
I don't believe we have any old business, so we will entertain the commissioners' comments.
You have before you your bi-weekly report on projects, and when I put this together on Monday, there's been a couple of changes since Monday, so I'll point those out as we go along, so it won't deviate just a little bit from the sheet. The courthouse exterior project, they still continue to do the window installation as part of that, and they moved to the north side, so they just about completed three sites, and we'll start seeing them mobilize to do the rest of the tuck pointing and crack repair at the latter part of this month. The NX generator project, I did speak with the contractor yesterday. He's indicated that the generator will be delivered in June, and so we'll have a pre-construction meeting sometime next week to see how that project unfolds. The magistrate court replacement glass, that piece of glass, as you recall, that was the one that was cut inappropriately, and so the new piece of glass is to be delivered the 5th, and then the installation will be scheduled thereafter. The health department awning, as of Monday, they'd indicated that the product was supposed to be delivered in a couple of weeks, while that product got delivered late Monday, and so they installed it yesterday, so it's done. Yeah. And it looks very nice. It looks, it matches the roof line very, very nice. The voter registration camera, that's the camera that was required to be put in. As they do, the ballot counting has to have a security camera at the top of. We moved their mail room area to another location in the clerk's office and established an area in voter registration of where they do nothing but just count the ballots. It had to be segregated from the rest of the office, and so there's been a camera installed over that, and that is up and going. The parts for the current generator test panel has, they have been delivered, actually got delivered Monday, and we're working with 911 to schedule a date that will require a power shutdown. They'll be required to move into their mobile command center during that time period. We'll have to shut down the servers in this building that operate on the power for this building, so that'll be an evening project sometime in the next week or two to get that Still waiting on feedback from LWC on the Coleman roof. The First Bank Expo Hall, HVAC, the contractors indicated that will be finished and operational in time for the next big event in there, which is the symphony. So it'll be a good time to try this, and that simply date is April 20th, so that'll be finished up in the next couple of weeks. And then the two panels, the ejector panel, pump, the ejector pump panel, which is the ejector pumps in this building, that panel was actually delivered, and they should be here today to put that in. Then the other one we'll have to schedule because it also will require electrical shutdown for that sump pump panel, but we'll get that scheduled probably about the same time we do the generator upgrade, because we'll have to have an auxiliary generator run that pump at the same time. And then, as always, there in the lower right-hand corner, the council one-time fund balance there, the actual, the balance, if you looked, is 3.8, but remember that includes the 1.5 million that, for the deappropriation, and the incumbent amounts are still in that balance if you went to look at it, but we're actually operating off the 1.2 number, which is the actual number that has been designated for these projects. And thus far, out of that 1.2, if you look right above that, so far you've only got $84,000 committed, committed to that 1.2. Any questions?
Steve, on this weekend, the solar eclipse, the fairgrounds are running out spaces. Can you tell us how that's going?
No.
They do rent as a fairground.
We rent the fairgrounds to, this is independent, individual. We're not, we don't have anything to do with it, other than just renting it. My last information is that the response has not been as great as they anticipated.
But the weather report, right now, looks pretty good, so-
Yeah.
There may be a lot of-
Maybe a last bit of fury, but they've got some big events planned out there. I mean, I, I wouldn't want to be the organizer of the event, given the circumstances. And then, just as a follow-up, at the workshop, remember Max had indicated to you that the Fleet Management Committee, we tried our first online auction for our vehicle, and a similar vehicle, we put a pickup truck from the Sheriff's Department in it, and a similar vehicle at our auction at the site last year went for around $5,700. That was the high, and the one we put in the auction, which probably wasn't quite as good as what we put in, went for $9,600. So it was a good first test. Thank you.
Mr. Faster, good morning.
Good morning.
I want to start off by asking Valerie to come up and talk about an EDC project on a contract extension for Make My Move. I think most of you have seen some information, either an email from me or from Valerie.
Yes, I think everybody's seen one or two.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Welcome, Jeff. Over the last couple of weeks, I've been working with Make My Move in the city of Richmond on a contract extension. If you recall, Make My Move is the remote worker incentive program that we've been working on for about two years now, where we've created a page where Make My Move is doing all the marketing on our behalf to attract remote workers who can live anywhere to relocate to Wayne County. To date, we've had 13 households commit to moving here. 10 or 11 are here, 2 are in the process and should be here any day. But it took us about six months to get the program up and running, so we did lose some time in the, in the program's activity, just, just getting our marketing underway. But we're to the point now where we have a really good rhythm, we have a really strong pipeline of remote workers, and so we would like to see the program carry on because of all the work that we've put into it. However, it was brought to our attention when Make My Move came to the city, who is the entity that has the contract with them, and said, "Our contract is up. We need to renew if you want to," and the city did not budget for the contract amount. So remember, last time, the city paid the contract, and then we used Consolidated Edit for the remote worker incentives. And so that has been how we've been operating, and so in order to carry this forward, I spoke to the commissioners. They were very interested in seeing this through, and so they made a recommendation to pay for the contract renewal, as well as to move our goal from 20 total workers to 30 total workers, which means we need an additional $50,000 in incentive dollars as well. And so that puts the total request from Consolidated Edit to $130,973. The commissioners approved that request last week. I took it to my board on Monday. They also approved the expenditure from Consolidated Edit. So now I bring it to you for your consideration so that we can carry this forward for one more year. And there is a chance, if we meet our goal of 30, we will get a $60,000 grant from the IEDC, so we would need to work on an interlocal agreement between the city and the county that when the city receives that reimbursement, that they would pass that along to the county to reimburse the Consolidated Edit fund.
So the city's not considering any savings?
Not financially. No.
Mark, do you know what we have in that, in that fund? What's the balance in that fund?
Not on the hand, no.
In the Consolidated Edit Fund, there's, what, a million and a half, 2 million that's uncommitted, but-
1.2 million uncommitted at this time.
And that's not counting revenue? And that's not counting revenue for 2024.
That's correct.
So what we're asking is that you would consider an additional appropriation. It would have to, to be at your May meeting, May first, I think, is your, is your meeting. We could get that advertised and be prepared, but the commissioners strongly endorse and recommend that, that we do this. There's the question about, is the city contributing? Of course, they are the major contributor to the Consolidated Edit Fund. Well over half of the, of the funds come from the city's share of it. So I think you can, you can make the case, and they certainly did, that, that they are contributing by using Consolidated Edit. We have had thirteen, did you say, thirteen people that have already moved to Wayne County as part of this process and most of that activity happened in the last twelve months. The first twelve months it really took to get the program up and running and coordinated. So we think there'd be some additional movers in the, in the next twelve months. Whether we'll get to thirty or not, I don't know that we can count on that, but I think we absolutely will get additional folks moving here. Did you go into in your email the information about the average family size and all of that?
That is on your document at the bottom, the mover update. Of the thirteen households, the average household size is one point nine and the average household income is just under a hundred and five thousand dollars.
Do they have a set amount of time they have to stay? Once they retire, do they have to stay five years or?
So upon relocation, once they provide proof of residency, they receive their first twenty-five-hundred-dollar installment and then upon being here for one year, they have to provide proof that they still live here, then we initiate the second twenty-five-hundred-dollar payment. But an individual I'm meeting with tomorrow for that second payment, she showed me proof that she signed another year's lease, so I think four people have bought homes of the thirteen, the rest have rented. So those who have bought homes, you know, have planted deeper roots in the community, so that's really what we want to see. But they do have to stay a year at a minimum, but so far no one has moved.
Just one year as a minimum, right?
Actually, it's two years, I'm sorry. It's two years. Yes, it's two years.
Thank you. You have a question? If not, I will entertain a motion that we advertise to spend this one hundred and thirty-nine seventy-three on Consolidated Edit. What does that mean? Most of our queries, do we have a second?
Sorry?
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
In the post, there are none. We will get that advertised and do it at our main first meeting.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Val. All right, good morning, everyone. Welcome, young Jeff. Couple of things I, I want to cover, Mary Ann, I gave you copies of this, I think it's on your chair. There's a report here, there are two different reports that I passed out to you earlier. One is from Dunn and Associates, which is, is our, provides our insurance, healthcare, they're the, the third-party administrator for our health insurance program. First, let me tell you that Kathy Dunn will be here to talk to commissioners at our April twenty-fourth meeting at one-thirty in the afternoon, so you're all invited to attend that session to get her update on where we're at with our insurance program. This report comes to us on a weekly basis. Usually we get it late Wednesday afternoon, this is last week's report, and so I'm going to start getting this out to all of you. I, I report to you periodically on exactly the balance of, of that health insurance fund, but I've highlighted in, in yellow, you know, there's, there's four point three five million in the reserve fund for the health insurance program as of last Wednesday. As you look at this and have questions, let me know, but the, I think it's important that you all know where we're at with that fund. I understand that Kathy has some concerns with changes on the federal side, requirements of what kind of things our, our program has to fund and there are significant changes in, with medications and, and what has been made available and we'll have to make some decisions on what we're going to do, but there are things that could impact the fund going forward and how much money is, is left in the fund, so we'll have those conversations starting on the twenty-fourth. The other document you have is a two-sided form here on ARPA expenditures. It's, I think, pretty, pretty straightforward, but we are, on one side we have help projects, on the other side are non-help ARPA projects. So we have started in the last month or so, really picking up the pace on implementation of the help projects. That will continue over the next six months or so. We spent three hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars in the last couple of months on, on those projects, out of a total commitment of five million, eight hundred and ninety-three thousand of ARPA funds. There are a couple of other projects that, that currently have other sources of funding and that is primarily, well, the emergency communications project that, that you see down at the, towards the bottom, the last three projects that are listed there. That was what was completed initially to give us a sense of, of where we needed to go with our emergency communications program. So that was completed and paid for out of the general fund out of council contingency last year. The blight elimination program is rapidly moving towards implementation. In fact, Steve and I had a meeting yesterday with the city and the, and the EDC to talk about that. The EDC, Sarah Mitchell is going to be coordinating, coordinating that program for us. That's a total of, of what, seven hundred and, well, seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars that will, will go towards the blight elimination. It's half of that out of county edit, half of that out of consolidated edit. So we're working through some of those issues and the guidelines and so on, that we're working with towns, excuse me, and the city and then there will be some, some blight elimination investment in the, in the unincorporated parts of the county as well that will come from that fund. On the other side of the, of the report, you've got the non-help projects and those are broken up by year. We started in 2022 with the purchase of radios for the sheriff's department, four hundred and twenty-five thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars for 2023. We've got commitments for the, the community coordinator, that's Beth's salary. We've got the scanning project that started in 2023 at a million, eighty thousand. We've spent about half of that up to this point. We bought sheriff's vehicles, three hundred and one thousand, two eighty. We hired Baker Tilly as consultants on expenditures of ARPA funds. We set aside fifteen thousand dollars. We've spent about three thousand dollars of that and there's about twelve thousand remaining that we are renewing that contract and that money has been re-appropriated for this year. So we'll continue working with them as we, as we complete the ARPA projects and, and report on those. We bought a truck for the highway department at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And then you've got the projects that are committed for 2024. In the first column, the amount that's committed, total of six million, four hundred and nineteen thousand, two hundred and five dollars has been committed. And in that first column, at the very bottom, there are currently uncommitted funds of four hundred and eighty-four thousand, seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars. We'll work with you on, on where we go from here with those, those funds being committed, but you can see that we're, we're really beginning to pick up the pace on, on implementation of all of those projects that we've identified up to this point. Questions on what's committed, what's spent, where we're at on any of these? Yes.
On the blight elimination or any other funds outside of?
No. The city has an allotment for a couple of major projects within the city, but these are, these are the two that are, you know, county-wide projects.
Do they have the rule nailed down yet for those?
We're, we're very close. For the blight elimination, for the downtown revitalization and we're, we're working now on the housing infrastructure. All three of those programs we expect to launch. In fact, the, the downtown revitalization, we think will, will probably launch next week and that's going to be actually done with a mailing by using GIS and, and information that we have available. We're going to pinpoint the owners of properties that meet the criteria of being for-profit businesses in the designated areas and they will get, each get a letter that will, will go directly to them, telling them of, of the program, where to get additional information, who to contact if they want to apply. And we talked yesterday about having an application period that would open probably in the next week or so and, and running through the end of June for the application. So we're, we're really starting to move forward with implementation on a lot of these projects. Some of the playground projects that have been put together in the small towns, the creating places, matching grant programs that the county has committed ten thousand dollars to each of those projects. Excuse me. Three of them have launched their matching fundraising programs. Two of them have already reached their goal of five thousand dollars. So that's East German Town and Economy and the other three are working towards implementation, so it's, it's really an exciting time for those small towns and those projects that are being, they're, they've put together. It's, it's fun to watch. The sixth one is the city of Richmond, not a playground. It has to do with the, the park department owns a piece of the Rose Garden complex and there's a fountain in the park that they own and renovation of that fountain is their project. They haven't announced a date yet, but I heard from the city that in doing some work in, in a part of the park that, that has kind of been used as a, a place to park junk in the past, they were working in that area and they found the original bowl for the, for the fountain from a hundred years ago and, and they're planning to use that in the, in the renovation. One other pet project that, that I'm working on is, I think I've talked to most of you about this. We have a statue of, of the Civil War Governor Oliver P. Morton on the second floor of the courthouse and at some point in the past, Governor Morton lost his, his index finger and thumb on his right hand. So I, I worked with the, the art museum to identify a sculptor who can replace those fingers, so I'm actually going to go to the commissioners this afternoon and ask for permission to privately fund the replacement, but to give, give us permission to actually attach a new finger and thumb to, to Governor Morton's statue. Any of you that didn't know that, that is a copy of, of the original marble statue that is in Statuary Hall in, in the U.S. Capitol, so I'm kind of excited about that project myself.
Hey Jeff, do you have?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, do you happen to know where the expansion of the childcare seats? Looks like you, we paid out three hundred thousand.
We did.
Do you know where those are going to be?
We do. The YMCA is, has leased space in a, a building on West Main Street. They're planning to, to get that started very quickly and actually be able to, to provide those, those seats for infant through toddler kids starting this summer, so it's, it's moving forward.
But you don't know what, what's going on, where there's a stack of?
I, I do, I can, I can look it up for you, but.
Okay, that's fine.
Off the top of my head, I don't have it.
Yes, Jeff?
Yes, sir.
The blight elimination program? I assume if the property owner refuses to take care of the property, then the city will tear those down?
Correct, so.
And then the lien will be broken, get it to property.
And that is a part of the process. So if they go through the unsafe building process for each of those communities and there's two funding streams and so they'll be handled a little differently. The county's funds will be available for participants in the help program. The consolidated edit funds will be available to the communities that contribute to the consolidated edit fund. So it's a, it's a different set, although there's overlap, it's a different set of participants. They have to follow their unsafe building process. The, the funds would go to the town or the city to, to do the demolition work and then they have to put a lien onto that property and ultimately if they recoup money from, from that lien, that money would go into their unsafe building fund to be able to continue again with another project if they have it.
I guess leading into that, you'll file a lien, but the property owner doesn't pay that lien, so it becomes a tax lien.
Ultimately, yes.
What process we have to go through because I don't break that kind of money in tax sale.
Correct.
You'll have, have a three-year timeframe before coming to commissioners.
Now you go through the tax sale process, ultimately to the commissioner's deed sale process.
Probably a three-year process, right?
Potentially, potentially. From, from an ARPA perspective, once, once the county would, would transfer money for the help program and remember this is actually edit funds, so there's, at the moment, there's no time clock on it. But once we transfer the money to the town, then our role in that is, is only to provide help to the small towns particularly who may not have much experience in going through this process. So Steve is, is working so that, that our building department can kind of act as their guides, if you will, to advise them on how to get through that process appropriately, but they all have, they all have unsafe building ordinances in place and are familiar with that, that process at least on the surface and have agreed that if they participate in this program, they'll follow through on all of that.
It'll be a three-year process with the town or city to make sure that property basically is going to be managed.
Correct, but it won't be a three-year process to get the unsafe building raised. Correct, but it won't be a three-year process to get the unsafe building raised. Any other questions? Thank you.
Does anybody have any committee reports?
Beth, I don't have a committee report, but I was asked to, by the Randolph County Council, to extend their sincere thanks to our EMS and all of our responders during the tornado that they suffered in Randolph County. They said they couldn't have gotten it done without the help. So thank you profusely to all of those people on behalf of them.
Any citizen comments today?
I believe so. So workshop, it's April 17th at 6:00 p.m. And our next regular council meeting is May 1st at 8:00 a.m. And I will take a motion to adjourn. I need to hear that.
Agreed.
Motion at a second, all in favor?